All right, Mr. Braun?
Present.
Ms. Paeschnuck?
Present.
Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Ms. Sebacher?
Here.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
And Mr. Washington?
Here.
Eight council members present. Okay, thank you, and we have Pastor Williamson here to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for such a beautiful day as this and for the privilege tonight to transition within the public service of our city government. I want to express gratitude for those who are finishing terms tonight that have faithfully served us all, and for those, Lord, that will be taking the oath of office and beginning a new tenure, may you bless them in the life and work of this community and in their service. Add your blessings to their families. All of these folks serve, they have families, and they take time from them to serve we, the people, and for this, I'm grateful. I want to pray, Lord, for the solid waste department. I watched them yesterday and today all over town, picking up and doing the heavy lifting during spring cleanup, and I just pray, Lord, that you'll protect the backs, the shoulders, the knees, the hips of these folks that are doing all this cleanup. That's really heavy work, and I pray for safety for them as they move through our city. I lift up our public safety officers, our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, first responders, and all those that are our lifeline 24/7. May you continue to keep them safe and well in the diligence of their duty. On behalf of our mayor and council persons, those going out and those being installed, I'm thankful, Lord, for their leadership, for the guidance they place and the credence they give to the work of this wonderful community that we live in. May they continue to prosper and be blessed as we work and serve together. For those, Lord, that are part of the administration, those that lead departments, and those that oversee the life and work of our community, we are in a debt of gratitude for them. In this session tonight, beyond the transition, I pray your blessings on any business that's done and discussed and any decisions that are made that they will be pleasing to you. Bless our nation and those who protect our Constitution and defend our flag that keeps this nation both safe and free, and those, Lord, still battling Corona, those receiving vaccinations, and the millions of families that still grieve and mourn the loss of loved ones. We pray your peace and blessings on them. Thank you for all that you do for us and for blessing us with great and good love each day. We pray this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Face of flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Privilege.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a big night tonight. We'll start off with the presentation and approval of our council meeting minutes of March 10, 3.
Motion to approve the minutes is written.
Second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right. Now we will move on to resolutions. Councilwoman Paeschnuck, if you would, present Resolution 3397.
Yes, Resolution Number 3397, a resolution certifying the votes cast in the municipal election held on April 6, 2021. Whereas a general election for the office of City Council was held in the city of Fulton, Missouri, on the sixth day of April 2021, and whereas the County Clerk of Callaway County, Missouri, has certified to the City Clerk the results of the City General Election held on the above date, and whereas the council finds that the following votes were cast to what? For City Council, First Ward, Valerie Sebacher, 113; Mike West, 133; Second Ward, Jeffrey Stone, 65; Third Ward, Alan Combs, 130; Fourth Ward, Lauren E. H. Nelson, 107; Rick Schibberdecker, 57; For City Prosecuting Attorney, Eric Palmer Qualls, 501. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, as follows: Section 1, that the council finds that the following officers were elected and the City Clerk is hereby instructed to issue them the proper certificates and commissions. For City Council, First Ward, Mike West; Second Ward, Jeffrey Stone; Third Ward, Alan Combs; For Fourth Ward, Lauren E. H. Nelson; For City Attorney, Eric Palmer Qualls. I make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 3397 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Small turnout, but we got it done, and congratulations to all the winners, and thank you for those that didn't win that observed our city. I appreciate that very much. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right. We will now recess and then go right back into session with the new crew. Courtney's in charge. Oh, no. What we'll go ahead and do is we'll have Darren begin taking headshots of our new members. We'll also take a group photo, and while they're doing that, I'm going to switch out your nameplates and get everything ready for oath of office to our new members. All right. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call again, please. All right, Mr. Combs?
Present.
Ms. Nelson?
Present.
Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
And Mr. West? I'm sorry, I might have.
Here.
Okay, Mr. West and Mr. Braun?
Present.
All right, eight council members present. Very good, at this time we do still have comments from visitors. Anyone who's present that wishes to address the council, just step up to the podium and state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move right along. At this time, we'll do our adoption of council rules of order and procedures. Madam Clerk. The only different information or anything noteworthy is if you look on page one of the proposed procedures, you'll see a highlighted item that says work sessions can be canceled. There's been a little confusion about this in the past, so just to clarify, I went ahead and included it this year. Beyond that, there were no changes from any of the past years.
Motion to approve the rules of order as modified.
Second. Very good, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good, we'll move on now with the election of our deputy mayor. Do I have any nominations?
Motion to nominate Ballard Simmons.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Going once, twice? All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of that nomination being our deputy mayor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Simmons. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Braun, for serving last year. Appreciate that. Next up, we'll have our consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the consent agenda. And tonight, we do have approval for request of, from Nancy Lewis, for the Kingdom of Callaway Historic Society to close Ravine Street between 3rd and 5th Streets on Sunday, June 13th, for the organization's annual meeting. This request has been reviewed and approved by Chief Myers, Administration and Engineering, and the group will be responsible for placing and removing barricades. Now would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Cool. Very good. Moving on, we do not have new business. Council concerns, this is a time for the new folks that if you have a concern that you've maybe addressed with administration in the past, or if it's a pressing issue that's not being dealt with, this is a time to maybe bring it up. Of course, at any other time, you can contact administration with concerns, and they will be dealt with. So this is not the only time that you can have your voice be heard, but anyways, we'll start with Mrs. Reclu, if you would.
Yes, I'd just like to welcome all of our new city council members. We should give you whatever help or anything, whatever, I'm here to help, and I appreciate you joining us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, and she is always available. She's always very helpful, so use that as a resource, guys. Thank you. Councilman Stone?
I just want to echo one of the items that the pastor brought up in his invocation was just thank you to the city workers that are working through the spring cleanup. That's a lot of work, and then thank you to all those that participated in the clean sweep on Saturday. Even though the weather was bad, we did a great job. And then one concern to bring up to probably the city engineer is I continue to get complaints about the approach to the overpass at the south end of town, how bumpy the ride is, where MoDOT had replaced some of the pavement and had tried to improve some of that, you know, from about the, just as you start into the turn on that approach to that overpass through the overpass, it's, the ride is not smooth, and so I've received repeated complaints from constituents about it.
Very good, we'll look into that. Thank you. Councilman Washington?
None at this time.
Nothing, okay. Councilwoman Nelson?
None at this time.
Okay. Councilman Combs?
Nothing at this time.
And Councilman Braun?
Nothing right now, thank you.
And Deputy Mayor Simmons?
No items.
And Councilman West?
I have a long list. No, just kidding.
It's saving up a while.
I'm just glad to be back, and I look forward to working with all of you and city staff and working for the citizens.
Welcome back, sir. Appreciate it. All righty, moving on, we'll move to, where are we, resolutions? Yes, resolutions. Councilman Simmons, Resolution 3398, please.
Yes, sir. Whereas Valerie Sebacher has ably and conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri, as City Councilwoman for the First Ward from April 9, 2019, to April 13, 2021, and whereas Valerie has conducted herself in the office of Councilwoman with great regard to the desires and well-being of her constituents, and whereas Valerie's dedication to the city of Fulton and commitment to local government are noteworthy and deserving of recognition, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the citizens, the city of Fulton, Missouri, as follows: That the mayor and the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered to this community. That the City Clerk, that the Clerk of the city of Fulton, Missouri, shall enter this resolution on the Journal of the Council and shall deliver a duly certified copy thereof to the said Valerie Sebacher. I make a motion that this Resolution 3398 be approved at this meeting.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And Valerie had to leave, so she's not going to be able to receive this right now, but we'll get the proclamation to her, so appreciate her service very much. All right. Moving on, Councilman Washington, if you would, present 3399. Darren, where am I? What idea? You're on it now.
Resolution 3399, whereas Lindsey Paeschnuck was ably and conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri, as a City Councilwoman of the Third Ward from April the City of Fulton, Missouri as a city councilwoman of the third ward from April 10th of 2012 to April 12th of 2016, and again from April 9th of 2019 to April 13th of 2021. And whereas Lindsay has conducted herself in the office of councilwoman with great regard to the desires and well-being of her constituents. And whereas Lindsay's dedication to the City of Fulton and commitment to the local governments are noteworthy and deserving of recognition. And now whereas, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri as follows. Section one, the mayor and city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Fulton, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful, valuable service rendered to this community. Section two, that the clerk of the City of Fulton, Missouri, shall enter this resolution on the Journal of the Council and shall deliver the duly certified copy thereof to Lindsay, to the said Lindsay Pace Schnuck. I make a motion to approve Resolution 3399 at tonight's meeting.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Congratulations, Lyndy. Thank you so much for your service. If you'd meet me at the podium.
Yes.
There he is.
You can get your name, Blake. Do whatever you want.
Yeah. I kept my, yeah, last one. There you go.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, one, two.
Next up, Councilman Stone, if you would present Resolution number, oh, no, I'm skipping Bob. Sorry about that. We'll, we'll go with Resolution 3400, if you would. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3400, whereas Rick Shippadeker has ably and conscientiously served the City of Fulton, Missouri, as city council of the fourth ward from April 12, 2011, to April 13, 2021. And whereas Rick has conducted himself in the office of councilman with great regards to the desire of well-being of his constituents. And whereas Rick's dedication to the City of Fulton and commitment to local government are noteworthy and deserving of recognition. And now therefore be it resolved by the city, by the city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, as follows. Section one, that the mayor and the city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, on the behalf of the citizen of the city, desire to convey expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered to this community. Section two, that the clerk of the City of Fulton, Missouri, shall enter this resolution on the Journal of the Council and shall deliver a duly certified copy thereof to, to the said Rick Shippadeker. I make a motion that we accept it, approve this resolution.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right. Meet me up front.
Long time. Lot of service appreciated. And this life here is really special service with that community. One, two, three.
Okay, next up, Resolution number 3401, if you would, Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3401, whereas Robert Bob Sterner has ably and conscientiously served the City of Fulton, Missouri, as city prosecuting attorney, from November 30th, 2015, to April 13th, 2021. And whereas Bob has demonstrated excellence in the field of municipal law and dedication to the City of Fulton throughout his tenure as city prosecuting attorney. And whereas Bob's commitment to the practice of municipal law and its application to the City of Fulton is noteworthy and deserving of recognition. And now therefore be resolved by the city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, as follows. Section one, that the mayor and city council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your faithful and valuable service rendered to this community. Section two, that the clerk of the City of Fulton, Missouri, shall enter this resolution on the Journal of the Council and shall deliver a duly certified copy thereof to the said Robert Bob Sterner. I move that we adopt this resolution at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Congratulations for all your cert, years of service, Bob. We appreciate it, buddy. You'll meet me at the podium.
You can take that.
One, two, three.
I've done that many times myself.
Okay, that was fun. All right, now down to the real stuff. We'll start off with Resolution 3402. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes. Resolution number 3402, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the landfill pasture land lease agreement for a period of five years and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3402 at this council meeting.
Second. Very good. And Mr. Johnson, if you want to.
Oh, this is the gentleman that made the initial request to see if we had any property up there for, for lease. I got hold of J.C. Miller, who's very familiar with all that property. Together, they toured the property. I had engineering put together a map showing the boundaries. The, the property has not been utilized for pretty much anything in the last 25 years at least since I've been here. The fences are in terrible condition. This guy's going to have to put up a bunch of new fence. He's volunteered to take down the barn out there that Mother Nature's already taken down part of it. He's also going to pull a bunch of trees in the past year and has agreed to keep the property low with brush off. So he's, he has a lot of, a lot of work planned and intended. Did have another guy pick up the bit back, I believe, when he saw some of the additional requirements that they've been in the request due to Mr. Mark's offer. I think he chose not to see it.
Mr. Johnson, has, is there a timeline when he's supposed to have these things done? You know, he said that he's going to be these things.
There is not.
The only timeline is the five-year commitment.
It's a five, it's a five-year lease. He's going to have, obviously, he's going to have to get the fence done before he can turn the cameras.
I, I just wonder if there was a list of things that he's supposed to complete it by such a such time, just so.
Okay.
There was a, there was an item on the gentleman's proposal, which he classified as an option for a water supply, for a water meter.
I think, I think the City of Fulton will work with him on getting that water meter installed.
Okay.
Due to the, due to the high out-of-pocket cost he's been experiencing in the first year.
Okay.
And then he'll have five years to recover any of the cost of these investing in the property and make these usable for his purposes.
Okay.
There's kind of no real downside. It, it also provides opt-out for either party. If we were to have someone interested in a business or industry to go in that place, we, we could opt-out and.
And this is not the landfill.
This is not the landfill.
Okay, sort of west of there, isn't it?
No, it's east.
Oh, it's this way?
East of the landfill. We, we, per DNR rules and regulations, we cannot have cattle get on the landfill.
Gotcha.
No, any, no any downs.
Yes, okay.
And the butterfly fields and the pollinator fields are all safe.
They're all safe.
All right.
They are outside this area.
Wonderful.
So we're looking for a motion?
We actually have a motion and a second, so I think we're ready to roll.
Got that. Is there any more discussion on this? Any other questions? Okay, we'll call for the question now. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? All righty. Moving on, we have Resolution number 3403, if you would, Mr. Braun?
A resolution, Resolution number 3304, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the contract with Ecton Construction of Montgomery City, Missouri, for the 2021 10th Street Improvement Project, COF 2101, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to resolve Resolution 3403 at tonight's meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Were there any questions or any discussion on this?
I would just like to point out that we're very, we're very pleased with the number of bidders we've received. And this, this guy was low by three or $400. He, there's, the second place was right in there wanting the job. So we're, we're very pleased with the bids, we're very pleased, and we've checked out the contract, and we're very pleased with the contractor.
So I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, this contract, this specific contract is just for the concrete work, like sidewalks and curbs and such. We have another resolution, which is for the sanitary sewers.
Correct.
What about electric, gas, water?
In-house.
Okay, so the, and then the asphalt?
That'll be, that'll be done later.
That'll be another contract that we'll look at. So there'll be really three plus the in-house city stuff.
Sure. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I, I believe this Ecton Construction has done work in the city in the past, and from what I gather, he, they've done very good work, so.
Historically, they, when they show up, they get in with both feet and get it done, which is.
Excellent.
We like, we like to hear that, especially in this project, it's going to be a 10th street by the, by the school. We want to have, be as little disruption to the school as possible, and hopefully get most of it done over the summer.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. West?
So, so the plan is to do the utility work and then have him come in afterwards, or is he, he can start right away?
We, we, a lot will be done at the same time, but we hopefully get most of the utility work done first.
Okay.
Play.
Because I mean, he has a certain timeframe, doesn't he? So.
Yes.
Don't want to delay him too much. Thank you.
All righty, any other questions, discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And that'll be kicking off, what do we got, another month and some change for the school?
About five weeks.
All right, we'll move on to Resolution 3404, if you would, Councilman Washington?
Resolution number 3404, a resolution authorizing the mayor on the behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary document, documents in relationships to the contract with MM Landscaping and Construction LLC of Eugene, Missouri, for the 2021 sanitary sewer renewal project and establish an effective date. I move that we accept Resolutions 3404 on tonight.
Second. Very good. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
This is actually for two projects. This is for the 10th Street project from Business 54 Estate, right, right in front of the, the middle school again. But it's also for sewer work that will be done down on Second Street from Business 54 Estate Street. I, I don't think this company's ever worked in town before, but Kyle and the group did a, made several phone calls, checking up the references, and the references were, all came back very, very, very nice, very positive. So we'd be happy to recommend this to the city council.
And this is a 2021 project?
Yes, uh, yes.
So, and we're not doing the bridge in 2021, correct?
Correct.
So we'll have some street work there and some asphalt, or is, is that center line on the road, or is it, I'm pretty sure it is.
Maybe Kyle's in the back can come in, but I'm not sure if it's in the middle of the street or if it's on the side. I know that when we had the, the discussion about the bridge construction, I know there's going to be conduits placed in the bridge for all of the utilities for the bridge crossing.
Okay. My, my point is, is we have, if we tear, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's center of the road because of where the manholes are, that I avoid every day to work. But if we do, then we'll have blacktop work there that needs to be done afterwards as well?
I didn't hear you, John.
There will be blacktop work to be done afterwards, once, once the sewer work's done?
Or do we delay that until 2022?
I imagine they'll go back with a patch.
Okay.
Patch it in. It won't be, it won't be an overdrive until the street's completed as a whole. They'll, you know, they'll go back a little with rock and let that come compact and settle in for a while, and then they'll go back with some asphalt, fill it in for, until they've approached one of the, as a road.
Yeah, I just know it's a high-traffic area that gets a lot of traffic, and how will, how will rock hold up in it, Bill, is what I'm, what my thought is, but.
It'll hold up till enough complaints come in and then go, go put asphalt in it.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate that.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All righty. We'll move on to, what do we got? Ordinances, okay. Councilman Simmons, if you would, Bill number 1609.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1609, An ordinance repealing Chapter 30, Cemeteries, Fulton City Code, enacting a new chapter in lieu thereof, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we advance Bill number 1609 to second reading at the next council meeting. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure, sure. I sent out a general overview today to the city council of some of those changes versus what we already have on the books. But I do think it's important to note that this specific section of the code has not been addressed or changed since prior to 1980. City staff, including our cemetery sexton and building and ground supervisor, as well as admin, we've put a great deal of time and consideration into these changes and research in making sure that we stay in line with other cities' municipality cemeteries. So some of the, the larger things I want to highlight are, there are fee increases included here for grave spaces and various services. Currently, the fees are $200 for a grave space, and so those are going to be increasing if this passes to $500. Again, that still keeps us well below anywhere in town, as well as in line with some of those other city cemeteries in our region. And again, I would point out that those fees have not been increased since prior to 1980. There is a clarification on language regarding above-ground burials. There is a clarification on language regarding above-ground burials. We have had some issues and miscommunications with that in the past, and so city staff feels that it's in the city's best interest to clarify that as best as possible. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions and go over any of these things with you. A majority of the things that you're going to see are general housekeeping items, clarifying that the city Cemetery Sexton is the main point of contact, and just really tightening up any loopholes that we found in that, in that language.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for the time and effort to go into that.
Madam Clerk, I have one question. Page seven, Section Thirty dash ninety-two, on curbing, fencing, and railing. It, the language is very simple that states that no person shall be allowed to put it there, but it sounds like really the only recourse that the city will take is that we simply will not care for that space if it's done. Is there more recourse somewhere to that?
Essentially, what will happen, it's very similar to if someone places an item and leaves it for more than five days, which is also included in here, it's very possible that the city will go and remove that fencing, and then we would seek any kind of payment for those services.
Okay.
So, that's typically been our policy in the past, and the Cemetery Sexton felt that keeping the language as it was was appropriate. But yes, if it became a nuisance and they truly were not able to maintain the cemetery properly, we would probably look to remove that.
Okay. I was, I was more concerned about curbing. I've, I've been involved in a cemetery where someone did that, and it, it's, it's, it's not desirable whatsoever, and so my concern was just that there was no recourse written into the language about what would happen. So, if, if it means that we'll remove it and we'll charge the individual, then, then I'm satisfied with that.
Another thing I'd point out, too, is that our Cemetery Sexton is on-site all throughout the week and frequently on the weekends as well, either he or his supervisor, so it's not, unless someone comes in the middle of the night, I suppose, which the police, I'm sure, would be aware, typically that kind of thing would not occur.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
We, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, um, so it, it says level with the ground and all that, so are any stones allowed to be above ground? I mean, there's a lot that are now, and I know, I go to other cemeteries and everything is flat. I guess that's for convenience of mowing or something of that nature, but...
Some of the older sections of Hill Press Cemetery and our other cemeteries do have areas that we allow upright headstones. Um, I believe most of those spaces have already been sold. They were historical spaces. Typically, anything we're going to sell now is a flat flush marker, and that's also indicated on the deed so that people are aware when they purchase those spaces.
And if we would ever decide we wanted to put in a mausoleum or something, then we would have to revise this to allow a bow?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion, questions? Again, thank you all that have participated in straightening this document out.
Billy, our Cemetery Sexton, and Jeremy, and Lori, they are, they put a lot of work into this, so...
Yep, yep, very good. All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And we'll do that again next meeting. Was that first read?
Uh, yes, that one will go for second at our next meeting.
All right, moving on, Councilwoman Reclu, if you would, present Bill number sixteen ten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen ten, An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternative Program agreements regarding federal project number TAP twenty-seven hundred five, five-ten, and estimate an effective date, and make a motion that Bill number sixteen ten be authorized for, for the second reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second. Very good. I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion on this? I know this is...
I just want, I want to point everybody out to the back page, the schedule. Based on the requirements and the, what were, what were the hoops we have to jump through, this is a twenty-twenty-three construction.
Oh, goodness.
But we're going to get it, so...
Yep.
So, it's a twenty-twenty-three construction. Up until we, up until we got into the specific paperwork, everyone was assuming it was a twenty-twenty-one engineering, twenty-one construction.
No.
It's not a twenty-twenty-three construction.
And this is only one side of fifty-four.
And what's the holdup? What would we be waiting on? Or is there a way we could do it and get reimbursed for the...
No. Got to wait.
This is one of those MODOTs situations where we have a lot of paperwork we're going to have to fill out, a lot of engineering and work on their end, so unfortunately, we can't speed that up.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well...
But we had also been considering the other side of doing it as a separate project.
You might have been doing the conjunction.
Or we might be able to do the other side in twenty-twenty-two under our own umbrella.
There's a chance of that as well.
Hint, hint.
Hint, hint.
We'll try.
Well, we'll see how that plays out, but, but yeah, that's at least going to happen, so that's great.
This is a lot of money that we're going to get, so this is wonderful.
And this is a fifty-fifty, correct? This is the fifty-fifty.
No, this is the eighty-twenty. Mr. Braun?
I thought the eighty-twenty we already had for the other side.
Okay. I was just flipping through and...
I believe this is an eighty-twenty TAP, and the cost share, which would be for the other portion, would be fifty-fifty.
Okay.
But it might be beneficial if Bill or...
Thank you for clarification. Courtney.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. I'm looking at Section sixteen A, and it talks about eighty percent, so that might not be, I might not be looking at, at, in its entirety.
Well, we got plenty of time to look into it, it sounds like, so...
Still lots of money for a project. Well done, Mr. Braun.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Exactly.
Alrighty. I will call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, and we'll move on now with the, or on the curb, so that's great. If you have questions or don't know what's allowed, just call Solid Ways, call City Hall, and they'll connect you with Solid Ways to tell you whether or not you can put whatever it may be out to the curb, so, but, but yeah, that's going great. We've got good weather this week for it, so I'm sure the, the guys are thrilled with that, guys and girls. Our next meeting will be held here on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at six-thirty. And that is it, except for we do have a need for executive session with regards to real estate, so...
Motion approved. A motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. Thank you, John. I have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. All, any discussion?
And we will do a roll call vote on that one.
Okay, if you would.
All right, perfect. Ms. Nelson, present. Ms., uh, sorry, Ms. Reclu?
Present.
Okay, and we'll just, we can go with yes, we're going to enter executive session.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Combs?
Yes.
All right, we will go to executive session.[1106.82]